My name is Genevieve Wong. I'd like to call the April 11, 2022 Commission Planning Commission meeting to order. Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Absolutely. Commissioners Borja.
Here.
Bethel Sabaniano, Tatisi.
Here.
Ann Wong.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Great. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would please read the meeting announcement.
Absolutely. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The county does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county's State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting is open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing a face covering mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and add it to the clerk. The chairperson will call your name when it's your turn to make a comment. To make a telephonic comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a comment. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@satcounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
And clerk, may please read the first item in the record.
Item number one is for a community plan amendment, rezone, large lot tentative subdivision map, small lot tentative subdivision map, special development permit, and design review.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emma Patton. I'll be presenting the Villages at Elder Creek Unit 1 project for you this evening. Next slide, please.
Oh, sorry, guys. Okay.
So, the Villages at Elder Creek Unit 1 project site is comprised of seven parcels located east of Elk Grove Florin Road and west of Hedge Avenue and north of McCoy in the Vineyard Community. Most of the parcels are undeveloped, however. There is one parcel that fronts Elk Grove Florin Road, which is developed with an existing driving range, which is proposed to be demolished. There is one parcel which is developed with an existing residence and accessory structure, which is also proposed to be demolished. And then there's a third property located off of Hedge Avenue, which includes an existing residence and a number of accessory structures, and those are all proposed to remain. Next slide, please. The project site is located within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan. The Florin Vineyard Community Plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2010. It's meant to provide further orderly urbanization of the planned area. Pursuant to the community plan, existing agricultural residential and agricultural properties are proposed to be rezoned to be consistent with the community plan land use designations to more urban residential designations. Next slide, please. Several properties within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan have approved tentative subdivision maps. On this exhibit before you, those properties with approved tentative subdivision maps are shown in blue. Of those approved maps, several have been constructed and are shown in pink. And planning is working on several more applications, shown in green, which are pending. Next slide, please. Lennar Homes is the applicant for Villages at Elder Creek Unit 1. In addition to bringing forward this application, Lennar plans to develop the approved subdivision shown on green in this exhibit. Lennar has several additional in-process applications, shown in blue, including Gerber Creek Unit 2, Gerber Creek Unit 3, and the Villages at Elder Creek Unit 2 applications. Each of these projects will be brought before this Planning Commission at a later date, and for a recommendation hearing and the final hearing authority for those projects will all be the board. Next slide, please. Thank you. The site's existing zoning is Urban Reserve and Agricultural Residential 10. It's surrounded to the northeast and south by rural homes. To the west is the approved but undeveloped Gardner Park subdivision. Next slide, please. Back in 2011, the board approved a project at this location that included a 457-lot single-family subdivision. Due to a number of factors, including the downturn in the economy, the property owners requested rescission of their prior entitlements, including a return to their pre-2011 zoning. Rather than returning those properties back to their AR-2 and AR-10 designations, however, the board approved a comparable zoning of Urban Reserve such that they can remain consistent with the County General Plan land use designations. Next slide, please. The applicant requests several entitlements, including a community plan amendment, a rezone, a large lot tentative subdivision map, a small lot tentative subdivision map, a special development permit, and a design review. On the following slides, I'll go into each of those in more detail. Next slide, please. Thank you. The project requires a community plan amendment to adjust the land use designation boundaries within the project site to accommodate the proposed street layout, lot planning, and the location of the proposed basin. The proposed amendment is minor, only resulting in a net increase of 2 acres in the RD 3 through 5 designation, a decrease of 1.5 acres in the RD 5 through 7 designation, and a net decrease of 1 acre in the RD 20 designation. Staff completed an analysis of the project for compliance with SB 330 and SB 8 to confirm that the project would not result in an overall decrease in residential capacity. That analysis is presented in full in the staff report. The minor adjustments to the community plan land use designation would result in a minor decrease in the residential capacity of the site. However, the net effect of the community plan amendment and the rezone resulted in an overall increase in residential capacity of the site and therefore comply with the state's guidance. Next slide, please. The rezone will change the zoning from Urban Reserve and Agricultural Residential 10 to zones generally consistent with the community plan land use designations as amended, with the exception of Lot 279 on the small lot tentative subdivision map. While the community plan amendment will result in the land use designation of RD 3 through 5 for Lot 279, the proposed zone is AR-2. The AR-2 zoning will allow the existing residents to remain on Lot 279 while meeting the lot area and setback requirements. However, the existing RD 3 through 5 land use designation will be maintained to allow the site to be rezoned and developed consistent with the community plan's intent and vision. Next slide, please. This slide includes the proposed tentative subdivision map. The tentative subdivision map will divide the approximately 75.7-acre property into 277 single-family lots, a multifamily lot, a park lot, one lot for the existing residents on Hedge Avenue, a school lot, a water quality-based lot, and three landscape lots. The tentative subdivision map includes the abandonment of a number of easements and portions of right-of-way. Access to the subdivision will be served via Elk Grove Florin Road to the west and Hedge Avenue to the east. The 10-acre school site will be centrally located within the subdivision. The 5.6-acre park site is located on the northern portion of the project boundary. The park site will be dedicated to South Gate Recreation and Park District. The multifamily lot is located just west of the park site and fronts on Elk Grove Florin Road. Next slide, please. This exhibit features the section for Elk Grove Florin Road as provided on the tentative subdivision map. According to the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, the landscape corridors on either side of Elk Grove Florin Road are meant to be 25 feet wide. The subdivision includes a 50-foot-wide landscape corridor instead on the east side. This will accommodate the existing regional sand sewer interceptor and a planned smud easement for 69 KV power lines. The wide landscape corridor will also include a 12-foot walk, an access road with 3-foot-wide gravel shoulders on either side. This will double as both a utility access and a trail facility. The landscape corridor will be dedicated to South Gate Recreation and Park District as conditioned. Next slide, please. This exhibit includes the typical lot diagrams for several lot conditions proposed within the subdivision. The project includes a special development permit to deviate from front, side street, and rear yard setbacks. The proposed deviations are similar to those allowed for subdivisions to the west of Elk Grove Florin Road, and so are compatible with the surrounding planned development. In addition, the applicant requests a special development permit to allow reduced lot widths and to deviate from public frontage standards. These lot area reductions are minimal and within the range allowed with approval of a special development permit. Prior to the development of these lots, planning will perform a design review of the site landscaping, production homes, and the front yard landscaping. Next slide, please. The board certified a environmental impact report for the Florin Vineyard Community Plan. Staff prepared an addendum to the prior environmental impact report for Villages at Elder Creek Unit 1 and found that the project would result in less-than-significant impact with implementation of the mitigation measures as provided. Next slide, please. The Vineyard CPAC met on December 9, 2021, and recommended that the board approve the requested entitlements with three yes votes and one no vote. Members did express concerns regarding the condition of Hedge Avenue. In response to some of those ongoing concerns related to the condition of Hedge Avenue, the Department of Water Resources -- or Department of Transportation, rather, has been working with the board and indicated that Hedge Avenue would be reconstructed with median and frontage improvements as the planned area develops. In addition, county staff is preparing project descriptions and some cost estimates to potentially improve Hedge Avenue through either local funding or grant opportunities. The DRAC reviewed this project during their December 9, 2021, meeting and recommended that the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines. Next slide, please. Staff has reviewed this application against county policies, codes, and ordinances, and has found that the project is consistent with applicable general plan policies and consistent with the Florin Vineyard Community Plan policies. Furthermore, the proposed setback deviations are similar to allowed deviations for approved subdivisions to the west of Elk Grove Florin Road and therefore can be considered compatible with planned development. The subdivision provides a school site, meeting the school siting requirements for Quadrant 3 of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, and the subdivision provides a park site adjacent to the multifamily site where a greater emphasis in common outdoor space and public amenities, as opposed to private outdoor space, is necessary. The project provides a wider landscape corridor along Elk Grove Florin Road to accommodate the utility easement requirements. And lastly, it was supported by the Vineyard CPAC and the DRAC. There are a few conditions that I was hoping to make note of. Next slide, please. Conditions 9 and 12 will require a subsequent design review of landscape corridors, production homes, and front yard landscaping. And then also, Condition 112B in your most updated packets is a late addition to the conditions and will require that the project owner enter into an agreement to maintain and operate an off-site basin that will serve this project until the basin improvements are accepted by the county. In addition, Condition 119 was also revised to allow for flexibility and compliance with low-impact development requirements should standards relating to LID change in the future. Next slide, please. Based on the analysis presented in the staff report and summarized for you during this presentation, staff is recommending approval of this application, consistent with the recommendation presented in your staff report. Next slide, please. That concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for you for any questions.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for staff at this moment?
Chairman, you talked about the potential improvements needed on Hedge Avenue. Is that somewhere codified in the actual conditions, or is that something that will be just a commitment that the county has said they're going to look into improvements there? Or what assurances do we have around that street?
This isn't something that is included in the conditions. The project would be conditioned to construct their frontage of Hedge Avenue, but the additional sort of research into the improvements of Hedge Avenue, including looking at the cost accounting and potential local funding and granting opportunities, is something that will be continually researched by the Department of Transportation.
But the project, obviously, on the areas that it develops, will make all of the improvements necessary to support what the county would do long-term.
Yes. Where it fronts on Hedge Avenue, they'll be required to construct their improvements consistent with the Florin Vineyard Community Plan.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Tatisi, if I also may, with the Tokay Crossing subdivision that was before the board a couple of months ago, the issue with Hedge Avenue came up there. Supervisor Natoli did direct planning staff, as well as DOT staff, to further look at Hedge Avenue, including looking at ways where the county perhaps could fund improvements on Hedge to improve that condition. So, that is a report back to the board at some point in the near future.
Great. Thank you for that.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner?
Thank you for your presentation, Emma, and thank you for the follow-up answer, Mr. Powley. My question is related to the traffic improvements that are now happening on Elk Grove Florin Boulevard. How does that coexist with this project, and will there be any other additional infrastructure improvements once this density has been reached on that corridor?
Sure. So, as you mentioned, Sacramento Department of Transportation, they are actively working on a widening project for Elk Grove Florin Road. That widening project is from Florin Road to Gerber Road, and it was anticipated to be finished around this time. There have been some delays, but it's continuing in progress.
Thank you. And one other final question. Was there any discussion at all talking about any alternative modes of mobility, such as transit and/or bike lanes, as part of the construction of this project?
So, within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, which this project is within, there is a trails plan, and this project would be a part of that. And so, the sidewalk network and the streets within the project would all connect into the regional trail system. Those connections will be made as the remainder of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan is developed over time. For instance, there is a trail that is planned south of this project along the creek, and so a lot of the trail facilities within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan happen to be located along the creek. There are several more trails that are along some of the major roadways within the plan, traveling north-south. And over time, as all those projects develop within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, those trail connections will be made.
Awesome. Thank you. And my one last question, maybe this might be better for the applicant, but you mentioned in your presentation about the park that would eventually be decided or designed or help designed or input by South Gate. Is this going to be a turnkey park that would eventually be paid by the community members through Melrose, and do they have an opportunity to also help design that?
It is my understanding that Lennar does plan to have a turnkey park, but I'll let them respond to that in full.
Okay. Thank you.
I understand that we have the applicant here today with us. Will the applicant be providing any additional information this evening? Or do you have a presentation?
No presentation, Commissioner Wong. Nick Avdis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Lennar Homes, thank you for having us this evening. We have our entire consultant team here available to answer any questions you might have. And I do want to confirm that we are in fact committed to entering into a turnkey park agreement for that park. We're obviously very committed, not only to the county, but to this planned area and beyond. This is not the first development that Lennar has engaged in in the area, and we have a continued commitment. The park is one of them. The improvements on Hedge are another commitment that we're making to advance the interests of the community in the area as well. So, again, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, great. And actually, before we get into questions, clerk, if you would please swear in the applicant.
Before you make your statement, Mr. Avdis, so please raise your right hand.
So, everybody that might get up should stand up. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Anyone who might have something to say. So, if you please raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you still affirm?
I do.
Okay. And when you go to the podium, maybe you could please state your name for the record and make the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
My name is Nick Avdis, and I have been sworn. I'm happy to do it. I bill by the hour. No worries.
It's her first one in two years.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Just to confirm, there are over 100 conditions in here. The applicant is okay with all of the conditions listed and modified and presented today?
Yes, they've been thoroughly reviewed and as modified, yeah, we are accepting of the conditions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I think that concludes the question portion. Clerk, are there any public comments this evening?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay. Actually, I think I've got, let's see, do we have a John Karrer here? Is that, is this the appropriate, sorry, is this the appropriate time? Okay. Is there a John Karrer here who'd like to speak? Sorry, clerk, do you need to swear him in as well?
No.
Okay.
I do. I'm sorry. This is my first, so I'm just going to. Okay, Mr. Karrer, if you could please raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you still affirm?
I swear.
Okay. And if you could please state your name for the record.
John Karrer.
And then make the statement I have been sworn. Say, "I have been sworn."
I have been sworn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great. You've got two minutes, Mr. Karrer.
How many minutes? Two. Two. I own the property that is on the southeastern part, which apparently Lennar wants to put an underground pipeline, which they say they just want an easement without buying the property. I think they should buy the property, as there would be contaminants from an underground pipeline. I've had this very same thing at City of Davis with their wetlands project back in 98, and I think it's important that they buy the property outright under the pipeline. As I stated in communication with, let's see, Clark Stevens from Lennar, an easement to traverse stormwater over our land would certainly have the possible resultant effect, as I have stated, leaks and potential cleanup. Mr. Stevens then replied, "You are right. There's always a possibility of leaks and cleanup." So, I want that addressed. Also, I didn't have enough time to take a look at the entire 2,807-page deal, but my name comes up quite a bit. Also, Lennar talks about trails around Elder Creek. Now, Lennar bought the 3 acres, I had 9 acres. Lennar bought the Elder Creek portion, the middle part of my ground, and no improvements have been made. And now they talk about, you know, they were supposed to, way back when, put wrought iron fences, beautification projects, which never happened. So, that needs to be addressed, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karrer. I guess, is it possible to ask the applicant to come back up here and respond to some of those concerns that have been brought up?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Wong, again, Nick Avdis. Yes, Mr. Karrer, our company has been in contact with him through a broker, Mr. Clark Stevens, about potentially acquiring some right-of-way for our future drainage alignment. It is not the only alignment that is available to us. It's certainly an alternative, and we're happy to continue those discussions with Mr. Karrer. I mean, rest assured that all improvements will be made per county standards.
I guess I have a question is, you know, because Mr. Karrer seemed or would like for his property to be purchased, that the, I guess, that you're requiring an easement through. Is that typical for these types of projects, where the property that you need to require an easement is also bought?
Yes, and I certainly don't want to speak for staff, but obviously, in the county's several master plans throughout the region that have non-participating owners, certainly there are many instances where it is required of, you know, an applicant, a developer, to acquire rights-of-way for roads or other utilities. That is not uncommon.
Commissioner Wong, just want to also mention that we do have in attendance Michael Johnson from our Department of Water Resources, who may be able to speak to some of the questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess, and whoever would be the most appropriate person. So, I just want to clarify that the, it's common practice to acquire an easement, but I guess what I was asking was, in my mind, I view acquiring an easement different than purchasing the entire property. And so, would you, or is the project contemplating purchasing the entire property at some point, or is it just the easement?
Yeah. At this point, just the easement, but again, these are all subject to private party negotiations.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have one quick question, Mr. Avdis. Does your project, or this current project at hand right now, is it dependent on the acquiring of the easement?
No, we have several other alignments to facilitate connection to the storm drain system ultimately. I mean, it would have to be approved by DWR, but we have accommodated that. But certainly, Mr. Johnson could comment on that as well.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
And again, for your use, if you want to kind of key into Condition of Approval 117 that relates to the property and the coordination for improvements.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from my fellow commissioners? Okay. I guess we will close the public comment portion right now.
And for the record, there are no further, there are no telephonic public comments on the line, so I'm closing.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendations. I believe that the project is in compliance, and I do think that it's a solid project that will help some of our housing issues and needs for our county, so I'll move staff recommendations.
And I'll second that. Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Tatisi to recommend, or to, I guess, move staff recommendations, and seconded by myself. Clerk, or I'm sorry, clerk, will you please call for a vote?
Absolutely. Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Rethel Sabaniano, Tatisi.
Yes.
And Wong.
Yes.
And the motion passes with those members present, with Commissioners Rethel and Sabaniano absent.
Thank you. Okay. Chair, will you please call the next item?
The next item, item number two, is for zoning code, for zoning code and administrative amendments, and the environmental doc is that it's a negative declaration. amendments, and that environmental doc is that it's a negative declaration.
This is where it goes. Okay, I think we're ready, Lydia.
Is it a little lower, a little lower, or are you good?
I think we're good. Did you already call it in? Did you read it in?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Good evening. I am Jessica Brandt. I'm a senior planner with the county Planning and Environmental Review Division, and with me tonight is Thomas Vogt, associate planner. We are here to present the SB2 Housing Production Streamlining and Acceleration Amendment package for your consideration. Wendy Hartman, our zoning administrator, is also here, and Julie Newton from our environmental team, a senior planner there, is in attendance as well. So you have the whole team for you tonight. And I am going to tag team with Thomas on the presentation, so I believe, next slide, please, Lydia. Do you want to swap?
Thanks. Good evening. For project history, so in 2019, the county received funding from the state with the goal of reducing barriers to the development of housing and streamlining housing approvals. This was known as the SB2 grant. From 2019 to 2020 and into 2021, staff assessed and analyzed existing codes and identified areas for amendments. Staff assessed the zoning code, the general plan, and the design guidelines. In spring in 2021, staff brought a summary of those proposed key amendments to the CPACs for feedback and review. And in fall of 2021, staff brought the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission for workshop review. Since that meeting, staff has incorporated comments and feedback from the CPAC and the Planning Commission, along with some new state legislation into this final amendment package. Next slide, please. The workshop feedback that staff received includes reconsidering the proposed minimum densities for commercial zoning districts, ensuring that the amendments to the use and development standards would not result in additional hurdles to the development of missing middle housing. The Planning Commissioners asked staff to consider the potential for negative impacts on adjacent single-family residential development if the proposed multifamily development standards were approved. Planning Commission asked staff to provide analysis on how the proposed reductions in multifamily residential development standards would facilitate additional residential units. And the Commissioners also asked staff to reinstate the multifamily parking requirements and restrict the extent of deviations that a new, the new minor special development permit could bring about. Jessica?
Next slide, please. So Thomas mentioned new state legislation. In 2021, California passed the Senate Bill 9, just called the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency, or HOME Act, which we just referred to as SB9. And it was passed actually after our workshop with the Planning Commission. It became effective of January of this year. The bill mandates that local jurisdictions like Sacramento County ministerially approve two types of projects if specific objective criteria are met. These are, number one, a subdivision of one lot into two lots in a single-family residential zone, which is called an urban lot split. And the second is a second primary dwelling unit on a property in a single-family residential zone. Staff from the Community Development Department, in concert with our county council, brought changes to Title 22 of the county code, which is our development title, to permit urban lot splits. And that was brought to the Board of Supervisors for consideration in December, and the changes were adopted there. As will be further outlined by Thomas, additional changes have, to the zoning code language, have been included in our package to coordinate with the county code changes and comply with SB9. These include specifying which zoning districts are considered single-family, adding a use category, and specifying applicable development standards for these second dwelling units, and adding required alternative lot standards for urban lot splits.
Next slide, please. Great, so this presentation will highlight the changes and additions that were made to this amendment package since the previous workshop hearing. These changes include amendments to the zoning code chapters 2, 3, 5, 6, and chapter 7. And you can review the materials provided in the September 13 workshop package for a complete description of the proposed amendments. Next slide, please. So within chapter 2, new language has been added delineating single-family and multifamily zoning districts. This will help clarify when SB9 allowances will apply. Within chapter 3, staff continues to propose expanded product types in all residential and commercial zones. It's not anticipated that the wider range will discourage the development of missing middle housing products. And similarly, staff has reviewed the previous Planning Commission's comments and continues to propose minimum density requirements in commercial zoning districts. This will bring the zoning code more in line with the general plan policies, which require minimum densities for residential products, projects. Also, within chapter 3, language was added regarding the second dwelling units as required by SB9. Next slide, please. Within chapter 5, staff has revised some of the multifamily development standards in response to the Planning Commission and CPAC feedback. Specifically, changes have been made to the allowable height and setbacks of multifamily development adjacent to and within single-family zoning districts. These changes will be more considerate of the transition of uses between single-family and multifamily. Attachment 5 has been provided to show the increased density potential within the revised standards. That's included in your report, and I also have a copy that I can display if you would New language has also been added to chapter 5 regarding the secondary dwelling, or secondary dwelling units, yes, which will utilize the existing accessory dwelling unit standards. And per recent board direction, the maximum size of ADUs is proposed to be increased to the industry standard of 1,200 square feet. Based on feedback from the Planning Commission and the CPAC, staff has reinstated the parking requirements, with the exception of the one-bedroom unit being reduced from 1.5 spaces to one space. Next slide, please. Based on the Planning Commission feedback, the proposed minor special development permit has been reduced to allow deviations up to 25% of a development standard. So as an example, if a project requests a deviation from a front yard setback, which is 20 feet, the maximum deviation that could be requested would be five feet, which is 25% of that. Within chapter 7, additional definitions have been included to support and clarify amendment language. And in addition, the creation of the minor special development permit and the inclusion of the SB9 items will require updates to county processes and also the zoning code user guide. Next slide, please.
Okay, so just for a little background, this code amendment package includes repealing and replacing the portion of the countywide design guidelines that pertains to multifamily residential development. This is to bring the county's design review into compliance with Senate Bill 330, which mandates that review of residential project design be objective with specific measurable standards. Feedback on the proposed change was generally positive at the September Planning Commission meeting, but after the workshop, staff did have the opportunity to review the proposed changes with our new design review administrator. He was also supportive, and, but he did provide guidance on how to make the chapter's language less open to interpretation and easier to implement for both staff and applicants. Therefore, staff has updated the multifamily design standards language according to his direction, but otherwise, no changes have been made to that since September. Next slide, please. General plan. So the amendment package originally included a small set of amendments to the general plan. As mentioned earlier, feedback from the Commissioners indicated concern that the proposed amendments, such as reducing the number of units in a project that would trigger minimum density requirements, could have a chilling effect on development. Staff began pursuing alternative language to address these concerns. However, we ran into timing issues and potential conflicts with upcoming housing-related programs. Therefore, amendments to the general plan are no longer included in this package. Staff did forward feedback from the Commissioners to the teams that are working on those upcoming efforts. Next slide, please. Environmental review. An initial study, negative declaration, was prepared for this project and released for public review in February. No comments were received on this document. The document tears off of the environmental analysis completed for the 2030 general plan and focuses on whether the proposed amendments increase impacts beyond those examined within the general plan EIR. Impacts in all areas of the analysis were determined to be less than significant. And next slide. So we come to staff's recommendation. We are recommending that you recommend approval. The items would be recommending that the board determine the environmental analysis prepared is adequate and complete, and recommending that they approve the proposed amendments to the Sacramento County Development Code, which include the zoning code, countywide design guidelines, and the administrative changes to our user guide. Next slide. And with that, we are open to questions. Thank you. Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for staff tonight?
Just one quick question. Thank you again for a wonderful presentation, and I appreciate you all reaching out to me as I was not a planning commissioner back in September. Question about the ADUs on the revision of 1,200. Is that 1,200 square feet total regardless of the size of the existing kind of anchoring house, so to speak, that's already in there?
Yes, as long as it is detached.
As long as it's detached?
Detached, yeah.
So you could have a, theoretically, a 1,000-square-foot home and still have a 1,200-square-foot ADU?
Yes.
Okay, understood. And then, was there a percentage ratio that was kind of looked at at all when, when you look at the SDUs and ADUs as trying to create uniformity throughout the county?
As far as like a ratio with the primary dwelling?
Primary dwelling, yes.
We, we did, the SB9 requires that that second primary dwelling be at least 800 square feet, but otherwise is silent on like maximums. I think we ended up landing with that 1,200 square feet for both ADUs and second primary dwellings, because that did seem a reasonable size for most single-family lots within the county, where someone could make both of those, sort of that primary unit and a secondary unit work. Obviously, if you get a very small lot, you won't be able to make the size work just because of setback requirements and access. So that's sort of, that's where we ended up with that 1,200 square feet. I don't know, Wendy, you want to add?
Sure. So previously, the county zoning code did have restrictions based on parcel size with, I believe it was the 2017, or maybe it was the 2019 state updates to ADUs, they prohibited us from restricting maximum size based on the size of the lot, and came up with criteria that indicated that we had to allow for at least an 800-square-foot ADU in certain circumstances, 850 for detached structure, and 1,000 square feet if it was one or more bedrooms. The state guidance does have a cap of 1,200 square feet, and when we did bring the Title 22 item to the Board of Supervisors, they did indicate just going with the 1,200 square feet, because we have had quite a few folks over the course of the last year or so actually having to go through a lengthy and somewhat costly special development process just for 200 extra square feet. A lot of folks rely on manufactured or modular homes, and 1,200 square feet is a very typical model size, and so a lot of folks were having a hard time meeting that 1,000-square-foot threshold that we currently have in place.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. No further questions.
I guess I have a comment and a question. You know, first, I'd like to, you know, thank staff for all of your hard work in putting this together. You know, my, my comment is to the, the new minor special development permit process. And, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate staff kind of thinking outside the box and finding ways to, you know, slightly try and expedite some of these, you know, they're still projects, but they're not as big a projects to kind of, you know, help with the housing, you know, the housing supply issue that our state is currently facing. So just wanted to say, you know, I, I like the, the path that you've chosen there. I am curious, though, and I guess, I mean, this is just my own curiosity, how did you get to establishing 25% as the cap for deviation from the development standards?
So I'll go ahead and take this one. So currently, in our zoning code, when people, when people are requesting a parking reduction, we allow for 25% as kind of an administrative level. We use the threshold of 25% actually in many circumstances in our zoning code from deeming something ancillary. And I believe when we were having discussions at the Planning Commission workshop, and there was some concern with just having someone being able to request, you know, 100% deviation in the setback, we, we just felt that 25% was a reasonable amount based on other provisions we have in our zoning code.
And just to add on to that, it does seem from projects that have come through that two or three feet could actually make the difference between adding a unit or not. And so it did seem like enough to be helpful without being overly reaching in that area.
Okay, great, and it's consistent with current practices, so makes sense.
Any other questions or comments?
Actually, I just have one quick question. I'm not too familiar whether or not, is there a requirement by SB2 for the county to provide some sort of report measuring whether or not these kind of streamlining changes made a kind of a difference and or kind of a baseline measurement as to where this was, and then this is where we're at, to, to look at the efficacy of the changes to HCD, perhaps?
Not specifically to our zoning code changes, but there were criteria as part of various housing legislation updates that require additional monitoring of programs with our housing element annual report. So we will be reporting on, you know, how many increased units we've been able to develop have, so there will be some general metrics that are measured as part of our annual housing element, but they weren't specific to our zoning code changes. They were more in production in general.
Understood. And then, I, I would assume then that this would fall into the arena for the region, and then that we're tracking all the other county changes from our mega-region, I guess, Sacramento, and then hopefully have an aggregate difference, or maybe a plus or minus afterwards?
So our annual report focuses just on the unincorporated county. The cities each do their, their own annual report. I am actually not aware of whether our housing element really looks at what the, the cities are doing. I think it's more of a focus on our, our own requirements and, and metrics that we have to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay, Clark, are there any public comments this evening on this item?
No, none on the phone and none in the chambers.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay. The staff recommendations have been moved by Commissioner Borja. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay. The staff recommendations have been moved by Commissioner Borha. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Commissioner Tatisi. Clerk, will you please call a vote?
Borha?
Yes, yes.
Tatisi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And the staff recommendation, the motion passes with Commissioners Rethel and Sabaniano absent.
Great, okay, moving on to the next item. Clerk, will you please call the next item?
And the item number three is the Planning Director's Report.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. Just a couple of updates here, and they kind of relate also to some scheduling items. So wanted to update you on a couple of items that are going before the Board of Supervisors shortly. The first is the Mosaic Law and Shalom School Use Permit Amendment. That item has, as I mentioned before, been appealed and will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on April 26. So I wanted to make sure to make note of that. Next item coming up before the Planning Commission, there is an appeal that is working its way to you all. It's a two-lot parcel map. It is in the Fair Oaks community. That item was recommended for denial by the Fair Oaks CPAC, and, and a pre-authorized appeal was, was filed by the Fair Oaks CPAC. So the Fair Oaks CPAC will be representing the, or the community in that appeal hearing. I know that'll be the first time for some of our commissioners here to be on that side of an appeal hearing. So that is coming up on May 23. That's the target date for that item. And then lastly, just wanted to mention there were a number of items that were before the Planning Commission recently that are all coalescing into a general plan round. It will be the second, second of four for the 2022 year. That is targeted to be May 24. The two notable items that will be part of that package include the Castleman Northwest Subdivision Project in the Foreign Vineyard Community Plan, and then also the Siemens Campus Expansion. Those two items are going to be part of that package that will be heard on May 24 by the Board of Supervisors. And that is all that I have for you this evening.
Great, thank you. Let's see here. On to item number four. Oh, wait, no. I guess we just covered that. Clerk, are there any additional public comments?
And no, there are no additional public comments this evening.
I do have, I meant to ask this just as a follow-up. So just to confirm, are we still scheduled then for meetings on the 25th of April and the 9th of May?
Yes, you are. At least a quick scan of the next few meetings indicate that we will have items for those, those dates.
Okay. I will be unavailable on May 9.
Thank you, Commissioner Tatisi, for the heads up.
I'm assuming that would be in-person, right? They're moving, okay.
Yeah, we are in-person now until further notice.
Okay, if there are no other matters, we will adjourn this hearing. Thank you.